Good morning, I'll go ahead and call the meeting. Drainage meeting to order. First off, according to drainage claims.
Yeah, no claims.
No claims. And minutes from last drainage meeting, you want to read those?
Yeah. So our minutes from the last meeting of October seventh. Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage districts with the following members present. Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, and Carl Hugable. Also present were Betty Ellis Auditor and Amanda Meyer Finance Manager. Motion by Hugable and seconded by Rasmussen to call the meeting to order, motion carried. There were no drainage claims needing approval. There were no work orders needing approval, and there were no open drainage invoices needing approval. Discussion was held on repairs in DD thirty-six lateral three. Dan Henninger with Henninger Construction presented pictures that were provided to him of drainage of the image found during the drunk line of the open ditch. He noted that there are thirteen outlets that are broke off and need to be repaired. A lot of sloughing and sinking needing to be cleaned out. Cluse asked if it would be possible if the landowners to stop farming up to the edge of the ditch, Rasmussen replied, no. Rasmussen commented that there is a lot of snaking of the ditch. And Henninger replied that this is probably one of the worst ones he's seen in a long time. He continued by recommending that the ditch be straightened out, not just a normal cleanout, and that rip rap be placed under tile outlets. Henninger estimates the project to take probably one month to complete and provided an estimate totaling forty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Rasmussen requested the original work order from Dan Henninger so that he can sign it. Cluse requested that GPS coordinates be provided for the tile outlets. Motion by Rasmussen and seconded by Cluse to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections? Not they will stand approved as read. Say, do you want to act on drainage work orders? According we have eight of those?
Yes, so the originals, the are with the designated supervisor that therefore. The first one here, Rick, is yours for Larry Anderson. He has recorded a surface pipe that has been crushed in Drainage District thirty-six lateral B, which is section twenty-one of Lake Township. And he has requested MAF dam construction on that. The next one, Dean, is yours. And this was reported by Eric Meyer for a blowout on tile repair in Drainage District thirty-five in section twenty-one of Iowa. No preference on contractor. Dean, the next one is also yours. This was reported by Paul Hardy. This is a broken tile blowout in the field. This is on DD thirty-nine. It was unclear if it was the main or if it was the main relief. But either way, it was in section twenty-seven in Grants. And he has requested MAF dam on that, and we're hoping that MAF dam will be able to clarify for us on that one because there is a difference in size on that pipe. So with the size, we should be able to tell which one it is. The next one, Carl, is yours, which is for Peter Isaacson. This is for large cuts in the side of a drainage ditch that is causing it to collapse. This is in DD four, which is located in section twenty-one Eagle Grove. And there was no preference on contractor on that one. Rick, the next one is yours, which was reported by Scott Anderson. This is a tile blowout on a twenty-two inch tile. This is in Drainage District eighty-one on the main. And that is located in section nineteen in Lake Township. They have requested MAF dam on that one. Rick, the next one is yours as well. Actually, these next two, Rick, are the ones that Henninger presented on, so. The first one is actually DD thirty-six lateral C. This is the work order that I have made up on this because there was not one that was made up prior to. We were waiting to see what work wanted to be taken care of, so this is written up for sloughing or many lots of sloughing locations and broken tile. And then the next one is for DD thirty-six lateral three. And that is for debris in the ditch, sloughing and washouts at multiple locations, multiple broken tiles, a beaver dam, and it's very snakey. You have two work orders because what Dan presented on last week is actually in two different laterals. So I have contacted Dan and asked him to break out his estimate because we need the charges separate because they are two different funds, so that forty-eight thousand would be less and divided between the two. He was hoping to have that to me this morning before the meeting, but they had a town event that they had to go to for a friend, so soon as I get that, I will pass that along so you can see those updated numbers for each one of them. And then the last one is for Rick as well. This is reported by Dave Nelson. This is for two blowouts on a thirty-two inch tile. This is in Drainage Districts one thirty-nine dash seventy-three, and we will have to get the other county on the line with this one, so this will be presented to you next week hopefully as a joint call. Provided this isn't one of them that is with the county that we are going to be signing an MOU with. Then, this is on the lateral in section five of Delmont. And they reflected mountain riggers on that one.
Okay. We need a motion on that. Each supervisor just sign off.
No, just each supervisor just sign on.
Okay. Okay, item number. Open drainage invoices two.
All right, the two invoices that we have are both from Franklin County. This is simply for postage mailing for the drainage district assessments for this year. The first one is for DD one fifty-nine dash eight for a toll of eight dollars. And the second one is for DD one twenty-five forty-nine dash one lateral sixty for a toll of twelve dollars.
Is this my signature on this? You want all three supervisors on?
No, just yours.
Okay. Okay, item five, discussed affidavit of explanation of title filed by David Pogue. Dean, you've been working on this. I think you got a copy of it. It needs to be recorded. You want to kind of fill us in on the.
So the Pogue's lawyer had filed a affidavit of
explanatory title?
Explanatory title. Basically saying that because the work that we did that they feel that if the land bridge belongs to the drainage district. So, of course, when we did that work, it was stated at the meetings, at the informational meeting that we had that we are not assuming ownership, that the drainage trustees are not accepting ownership of it, but we felt it was in the best interest of the landowners to repair the bridge at the cost of, I think we spent about
Thirty-eight thousand?
Yeah, a little under forty thousand dollars to repair the bridge versus going into further litigation. They had already sued the county and the engineer once, and that was dismissed. So, I showed what was filed with the recorder to our drainage attorney, David Johnson. And he has prepared a resolution for DD one oh seven, resolution number twenty, twenty-four dash thirty-two. And this states, trustee Cluse presented the following background in their affidavit, David Pogue. His counsel attempts to make a record without a drainage hearing or trial in district court to establish ownership of a land bridge on their property. In Wright County case number, and it lists the legal case number, David Pogue and Douglas Pogue is trustees of the Henry Pogue and Levon Pogue Trust, sued Wright County Supervisors and Engineer by filing a lawsuit on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty alleging negligence. Fortunately, the county attorney fees were covered by its insurance carrier. That petition was dismissed on October first, twenty twenty-one by the district court ruling granting Wright County's motion for summary judgment. Subsequently, David Pogue filed a petition in DD one oh seven for the repair of the land bridge that was the subject of the litigation. The board has consistently taken the position that Wright County Drainage Districts do not own land crossings as drainage district assets unless there is clear evidence in the record that the landowner has been compensated for damages for the land bridge. In this case, the board has consistently taken the position that there is no clear evidence the land bridge is a district asset. Yet the Pogies have sued the county once for negligence and failed, then filed a petition with the Drainage District for repair. So due to the likelihood of further litigation and the fact that attorney fees would have to be paid by the landowners in that district, the board decided to repair the land bridge because the cost would likely be less than the cost of litigation, which is in the best interest of the landowners in the district. And which is the ultimate goal. It should not be construed that making the repair or relocation in this case determines that the land bridge is a district asset. Now that David Pogue has filed an affidavit in an attempt to make a record outside of the drainage hearing or or a district court proceeding, the board feels compelled to respond briefly but without litigating the matter via affidavits. Otherwise, the lack of a response could be construed as acquiance to the affidavit. Therefore, trustee Cluse introduces the following resolution and moved its adoption. And so.
Understood the resolution regarding?
Yeah, resolution regarding land bridge in eighteen ninety-three twenty-five, which is the range and section number. Whereas the issue of ownership of the land bridge in section eighteen ninety-three twenty-five has not been determined by the Board of Trustees or District Court, and the recent repair and relocation of the land bridge should not be construed as ownership of the land bridge by Drainage District one oh seven as a district asset. Therefore, this board hereby adopts the resolution that the issue of whether the land bridge in section eighteen ninety-three twenty-five has not been determined by the Board of Trustees or a district court, and the recent repair and relocation of the land bridge should not be construed as ownership of the land bridge by Drainage District one oh seven as a district asset. And I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And then on any one of those, you guys can have the original and sign for the chair. And then Betty can attest.
Okay, about nine fifteen. Joint call with Hancock County Review and Act on Memorandum Understanding and Establishment Procedures in regards to joint district repair work authorized by counties, drainage trustees, to be repairs up to fifteen thousand dollars.
And the go-to meeting app is down right now, so I'm going to phone in to that.
Do you want to do it on your phone or do we want to do it on the landline?
Let's do it on the landline, please.
Do you have Betty the number?
Yes.
You've got the number for the actual meeting, Betty?
Bottom highlighted area.
To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
Wright County.
Good morning. We got about another thirty seconds here and we'll get started.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Make sure that we get a send those.
All right, at this time on our agenda, we have a video conference with Wright County Board of Supervisors to discuss and possibly consider signing a memorandum of understanding with Wright County for joint drainage district repairs. We have supervisors Ray Hans, Brian and Locke, our auditor Iceman, our county engineer Jeremy, our drainage clerk Anne, two members of the public, and one member of the media.
And we have our three supervisors, our auditor, our finance manager, engineer, and several other employees and members of the public.
All right, Anne, anything you wanted to discuss on this, or?
Your documents.
What?
Wright County's documents.
Okay. Okay, we have the document in front of us here. Anything they'd like to be discussed?
No, pretty self-explanatory. It allows us as joint trustees to take action up to fifteen thousand dollars without any type of
Joint call?
Joint call between us. That is under the threshold required by Iowa code. We just felt that for small repairs that may ease ease the workload for both your board and our board.
But all information will continue to be shared regardless if it's meeting together or separately, or the one board only?
I guess that would have been my question was, just along with you communicate with us what's been done so we can keep our records.
Absolutely. And we would ask that you would reciprocate.
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion on this topic?
None for Wright County.
Yeah, there is nothing like that.
I guess on our end, we need a motion on our end. I can move on doing the memorandum with Wright County for joint district, joint district drainage repairs.
And Cluse makes a motion for Wright County to approve the memorandum of understanding between Hancock County and Wright County.
We don't do it individually.
That's all right. I think you could second chair.
Okay, so I'll second chair. Just to make sure we do it correctly.
Jerry made the motion, so Brian will second the motion and Hancock County.
Okay, we have a motion and second in Hancock County. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor in Hancock County say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes on our end.
All in favor of Wright County?
Aye.
Aye. All ayes Wright County.
So, so Dean, you made the motion. Did you add a second on there?
Dean seconded it.
No, I made the motion for Wright County. Rick seconded, yep. So both, both, it is approved in both counties.
Okay.
And we will sign the original document and mail that back to you.
Yeah.
Did you catch that, sis?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for joining us this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good week.
Okay, item number seven, we'll go into recess till ten thirty. We have another conference call with Fife County. We'll move into our Hey.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just a second, let me get that down. Amanda's not here right now.
Yes, sir.
It was at Rasmussen. It's with your old names.
Ready, Ben?
On the tentative agenda, Amanda, it was Rasmussen and then Cluse approving.
Item number nine, approved minutes from last meeting. Ben, you can read those.
October seventh, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District Trustees. To view the minutes from the drainage meeting, see the Drainage District Minutes on the county website. Chairman Hugable called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine oh six AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Hugable. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of September thirty, twenty twenty-four were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. The board reviewed the amended employment agreement for the Wright County Communications Director, Tiffan Pullman. The agreement is commencing on September thirty, twenty twenty-four and ending on June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. The vacation will allow Pullman to accumulate up to forty days with an option for a ten-day payout. The salary takes effect on September thirty, twenty twenty-four and will move to eighty thousand dollars on March thirty-fifth, thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Pullman will keep track of her hours in each department to determine her pay. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to approve the amendment to the employment agreement for Wright County Communications Director. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to receive the monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen to pay for the reimbursement of medical examiner continuing education training and to reimburse for mileage, meals, and hotel. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Hugable to appoint Rick Rasmussen to the management team to oversee the joint sanitaryian position with Humboldt County. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to approve the amendment to the twenty-eight ye agreement for environmental health services between Wright County and Humboldt County. Motion carries. Wright County will become the fiscal agent per the agreement. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen to approve the first reading of ordinance number sixty-nine, an amendment to ordinance sixty-one to continue the Wright County Water Works Enterprises in Wright County and establish rates in connection therewith. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty, approving addition of county property to the Eagle Grove Urban Renewal Area and the City of Eagle Grove. By roll call vote, ayes, Cluse, Rasmussen, and Hugable, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty duly passes and raises follows. And there you can see the entirety of that resolution. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, presented the final payment for the VRS, for Project VRS eight five five zero parentheses six oh one dash sixty, sixty dash ninety-nine. The authorized amount with the change order totaled one million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, one thirty-eight and fifteen cents, and the actual amount came in, came to one million, two hundred forty thousand, nine sixty. The federal aid city bridge program covered one million of the cost, and the additional cost will come from the secondary roads budget. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Rasmussen to approve the final payment of Project VRS dash eight five five zero parentheses six oh one dash sixty dash ninety-nine. Motion carries. Clemens presented resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, adjustment to specific bridge embargoes. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one by roll call vote, ayes, Cluse, Rasmussen, and Hugable, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one duly passes and read as follows. And there you can see the resolution in its entirety. Clemens went to the demo for the seismic testing held at the DOT shed west of Clearan. There were other county engineers and county supervisors that attended the demo as well from surrounding counties. There was discussion on what damage it could cause to the roads as it was very clear to see where the testing was done on the gravel roads. Clemens did discuss with the group about tile under the roads and the depth of tile. He would like to have the seismic testing team stay two hundred fifty feet away each way from the tiles and culverts. When Clemens receives the final map and the timeframe, the seismic testing will be taking place, the board will hold an informational hearing for the public. Clemens gave an update on the secondary roads. There were twelve work orders completed last week. Blade operators continue to weed with around bridges and culverts. Trucks have completed one hundred nineteen of the one hundred twenty-two segments of the twenty twenty-five dusting of gravel miles. Crews finished concrete patching last week. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
You need to correct those.
At two. The remainder of the funds from that bridge, the two hundred and forty thousand, isn't coming from secondary road budgets. It's actually coming from our ER fund, our Bridge Replacement Fund, our Federal Bridge Replacement Fund. The checkbook down at the DOT, essentially. So no local dollars were spent on that bridge.
Wow.
Okay? And I have a question about the idea of the informational hearing. I don't know if we stated that it should have been an informational hearing because that was the topic was whether it needed to be a public hearing or not.
Yeah, I think it said it wasn't going to be an informational meeting.
Right.
Somebody take out the word hearing on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Understand approved as corrected then. Open forum for the public. Anybody here in the boardroom or online that would wish to address us?
I want to make the board aware that Wright County Charcoal Foundation will, applications are available online now. The middle timeframe is January one to February fifteenth.
Okay. Hearing no other, move on to item number twelve, received quarter revenue report from the Wright County Auditor.
We are over in the new building, but we're still moving back and forth until everything is totally complete.
Okay.
We'll be in the resource building from now on.
Right.
Do you want to make that a kind of move of an announcement? That was Sandy for the news media.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sandy McGrath with Public Health will be over at the work. You're going to be working out of
Yes.
the Public Health Resource Building.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually the resource building, not
We have the old one. And like I said, we just have, there's, it's going to be a little bumpy at first, but vaccines until that generator is completely
I think that's part of that's going to happen today.
Andy give you the update on the generator. That you talked to Justin, and Justin had talked to Mid-America, and they were hoping to get there today to change that regulator.
Perfect, yeah, because we, otherwise we are going to move all of our vaccine news just a bit. Let's scroll down.
Have a chat.
Yeah, I used to say like a news release.
Adam, would you like to read it aloud for us, please?
It's going to be closer, yeah, I'm squinting to see it.
I know.
Wright County Monitor requests that county employee or county employee heads consider releasing more press releases to the newspaper. They are free to submit and always good for the public to remain informed of things. For example, the meeting that Clemens had with Twin Rivers Media could have been aware had a press release been sent and thus making the public more aware of Twin Rivers intention.
Okay, Samantha. Okay, thank you, Amanda.
I think if if that's something that the board wants us to do, I would like to see a policy put in place for guidance.
For press, for press releases?
What is a press release and what is it used for? Because I think one of the things that, you know, Jerika uses press releases and they're very you know, I mean, her press releases are emergency based, right? Now, if you start flooding the market with press releases, are people not going to understand the difference between mine or Jerika's? So I think I'd like some guidance on whether or not the board supervisors and what the board supervisors would like us to put press releases out of.
Okay.
Do you, have you seen some samples?
I have not.
Of policies? I mean, I put a press release out on all of the election, all the dates to remember and the upcoming, you know, and I did about three weeks ago so that
news media knows the dates.
Understand.
I don't, I didn't know that I would need a policy or something like that.
I think, I don't know whether, whether or not, because we post, we post a lot of things on Facebook. Um, if that's something that, because I never got a phone call, like you had stated that she was going to, um, about, uh, they could put a link to our Facebook page. They could put a link to our, our road closures. We've been very open about all of that.
Yeah.
So, I guess that's why I'd like some guidance, because I don't want, I don't want to flood the market with press releases.
I wouldn't, I would say, my desire would not have been for the public to be at the demonstration that was by Twin Rivers for the engineers and supervisors. I mean, um.
I think, I think Public Health uses it for like vaccines and stuff like that. I don't know if it's considered a press release, but I know they give them information.
Point taken.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you, man. Okay, quarterly revenue report for the Wright County Auditor, uh, copies of twenty-four dollars and fifty cents, plat books and maps eighty, firework experiments twenty, and voters' registration list of fifty dollars.
Motion to receive the revenue report for the Wright County Auditor.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay, item thirteen, receive quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Recorder. Any issue wanna go through any of this here? Anything stands out? Where you've been? There's just a lot of numbers on here.
The market, the way it's been the last year, we've just kind of been all over the place, so. Not, not a bad quarter, but not as good as I'd like to see it, but. Not as bad as it's been a couple quarters ago, so. I'm hoping that once the election is passed and we get into next year, I'm hoping that the interest rates come down and, you know, we start moving some real estate hard again.
You want me to copy that? Yep.
That second page of that report too tells you how much money we handle.
So.
The first page tells you what we get to keep.
Twenty.
Which is pretty small compared to.
Twenty-three thousand, uh, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents, of which it looks to me like, um. Like twenty-one thousand of that goes back to the state. Am I misreading that?
That doesn't look good.
And then the second page shows that, uh, the county received eighteen thousand and thirty dollars and thirty-five cents.
The twenty-three thousand is actually mine. My report is not a kernel bright, something's not right here. I'll have to do some checking on that, but the part that we get to keep is correct.
Okay.
You want just to.
Um. No, you don't need to, because that's just informational. You know how much money we handle is informational.
Yeah, okay.
Part that we get to keep is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, motion to receive the quarterly, uh, recorder's report.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries. Okay, Denise, update on, uh.
Denise, do you wanna sign this? Oh.
That's got a quick handout right in here.
You're gonna give us update on the I C R A fee policy modernization initiative. Correct.
So, um, you guys should have received, um, an email from the Reporters Association from the president maybe a few weeks ago. Remember that?
Yep. It basically has this information in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I just kinda wanted to go over some high points, um, about that. Um, it's what we're looking to do, uh, for a reasonable fee is, um, you know, to modernize our recording standards and such. Um, recording fees are the fees that are paid when real estate is recorded in my office. Um, keeping up with current technology and security needs. Um, Iowa, Iowa recording fees have not been updated since nineteen eighty-five. So, we're a little behind schedule. Yeah, almost forty years, so, um. I know that there's been legislation in the past, and it's been quite a few years ago to try to get those fees increased. Um, it did not pass. Um, but this time I feel like there's been a lot of work, research, um, you know, put into this, so hopefully it'll pass this time. We're way behind the eight ball here for money, so. Um, and, and what we're asking is, is still under the inflation rate of what we should be at today if we would have had steady increases over the years. Um, the proposal is called, is asking for ten dollars per page. Um, overall recording right now is basically seven dollars for your first page and five dollars for each page thereafter. So it gets kinda confusing. Um, this will make it easier for people to understand, straight ten dollars, and then we'll have that auditor's transfer fee, um, added on to that. Um, I think Travis and maybe, can't remember who the other recorder was that talked to you guys about that auditor's transfer fee. Um, that's still kinda up in the air, whether they're gonna ask for more money for that now. Um, it's currently five dollars a parcel with a fifty dollar limit on that, so. Not sure if that's gonna be increased or not, um, still kinda up in the air. Um, and with that modernization, um, we're gonna repeal the ten dollar non-standard recording fee. If it doesn't meet recording standards, we can still record it. We just add an additional fee on to that. Um, another thing that will be repealed is the seven dollar additional transaction fee, which is if a bank is releasing more than one mortgage on one document, you know, we would charge extra, you know, like a, a one-page document for that second release. So that would be repealed too. Um, again, making it a lot easier to understand, um, and we're still gonna be money ahead. Um, this would also provide sufficient funding for recording services, um, with important benefits to the real estate industry. Um, continue free access to more than twenty-three million records, um, real estate records on Iowa land records, which was, by the way, created by the Recorder's Association. Um, maintaining Iowa's first in the nation statewide electronic recording system, which is our electronic, electronically recorded documents that is also through Iowa land records. Um, maintaining technology in county offices, realigning document formatting standards, which is what, you know, people that record documents have to adhere to. Um, implement key projects and provide new and better services. Um, one of the, um, big things is establishing a statewide property notification system. Um, this was something that had came up in legislation last year. And our representatives had talked to the legislators and told them, you know, that we have this in the works and that it would be coming down the pipe this year, so they kinda backed off on that. Um, I don't feel like that fraud notification is, is concerning in Iowa as it is in other states, because we are an abstracting state. You know, when something sells, that abstract gets brought up to date. Um, it's just not as easy, you know, to steal your property in Iowa. But still, you know, there's a lot of concern about it. We still get questions about it. Um, so, something that needs to be done, and through Iowa land records, I think it can be done pretty easily, so, and a lot lower cost. Um, we're gonna look at indexing, um, pin numbers, um, with the associated references when the documents are reported. Um, accessing more property information in the online systems, filling in gaps in, uh, property location information. Improving search tools and increasing online, uh, access to historic surveys and plaits and improving back the blue information shielding. Um, Iowa, recording fees are currently the lowest in the central U.S. And revenue from recording fees fluctuates with the real estate economy. Recently, recording activity has been down. Um, this combination for a reasonable recording fee adjustment combined with modernization and service enhancements is supported by our users. In a recent survey of Iowa land records as stakeholders, eighty-four percent of the respondents said a fee increase coupled with these service enhancements would be a good investment. Um, this was also just recently approved from, by ISAC, um, as a legislative proposal. Um, estimated revenue, uh, for Wright County would be an increase of around fifty thousand. Of course, that's gonna fluctuate, you know, depending on the market.
Yeah.
Um, and I would just ask, you know, the, the board supervisors would, you know, approve this. Um, you know, and kind of move forward with talking to our legislators and, you know, voice in your opinion that you are all for this. So, that's all I have. I just wanted you guys to kind of be up to date on that and where we're, we're at and what we're doing.
Thank you.
Denise, the I C R A, and that stands for Iowa County Reporters Association. Okay, just for the news media.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen, hold on a second, reading on ordinance sixty-nine, which is the amendment to order, ordinance sixty-one to continue with County Water Works Enterprise in Wright County and establish rates and connections there within.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Your second, second. Any further discussion? Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Chair notes, aye. Second reading is passed. Item sixteen, Peggy, Wright County Treasurer, to present an abatement of taxes on a property in Belmont.
Okay, so a while ago I was here to talk about signing over two county tax sale certificates to the city of Belmont.
Yes, that's for the old school property.
Yeah, so things have changed. They now ha- uh, have a deed to them or going to have the deed to them very quickly. So they're asking for, we're not gonna do the county held certificates. They're going to actually do, um, abatement, because it will be in their name.
Okay.
So they're not gonna have to go down the route of the county held certificates. So I'm here today to ask for the abatement of the taxes on those two properties, two parcels.
And that amount is?
Total would be twenty-one thousand, six ninety-eight, twenty-six.
And that's how many years in the rear?
It's all of the four pages of receipt. They have not been paid since. I believe twenty, well, twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, since then.
I think it cleans up the.
It, no one's, it's just, how many do you come down?
I think it's important to, to understand too that, like, ten thousand, nine hundred of that are city special assessments. So it's already, half of it is already the cities on just their city's special assessment.
Sure.
And in the last ten thousand, seven hundred, most of that's gonna be going to the city and school already. They had talked to the school, the school's good with it. Um, I talked to NIAC, NIAC, there's a very small portion. They're, they're totally okay with it. So between the city and the schools, they're good.
At least you got it back in the system with the buildings down.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of illegal activity I believe happening in those buildings, so before anybody gets hurt, they'd like to take it down.
Yeah.
You have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve, uh, the abatement of, uh, taxes. Is there a property number there?
Uh, well, I have two parcel numbers.
Parcel numbers.
Yeah, I'll give it to Betty.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the parcels listed, the old Parker Elementary School.
Sorry. Any further discussion?
High school.
High school.
High school, excuse me. That's daycare.
Okay. Any more to this, I mean, are there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Adam. We're having the IRVM program.
Yeah, so a couple, uh, months ago, uh, Eric and I came in and discussed with you the IRVM program. Um, engaged your interest in the IRVM program. Um, we went back and took a look at the plan that we need to put in place for the IRVM program to be, uh, identified by, uh, the Tall Grass Prairie, um, for the state, um, and then to be able to start applying for the grants that they offer for equipment, seating, that sort of thing. So in front of you is the, uh, um, IRVM plan, uh, short, sweet, simple, uh, pretty much lays out everything that we do now. Um, we're gonna work with conservation on, um, there are roadside assessment. Um, and then in the future of, uh, starting to enact this plan, uh, in place when we do ditch cleans, tile work. Um, that way creating native vegetation and lessening the soil erosion in our road ditches.
And my understanding was without this, we are not eligible, without this plan, we are not eligible to apply for those funds.
That's correct.
IRVM, Iowa.
Roadside vegetation.
Integrated roadside.
Integrated.
Integrated, sorry. Okay, I just, for the news media, I'm, I get calls.
I'm sure it's. I would make a motion to approve the Wright County IRVM plan.
Your second?
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Records? Send that to, you want a copy of that, Ben?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Item B, discuss, consider hiring a engineer in, or intern for your archiving of your documents.
Didn't say office intern, correct?
Office intern, yes.
Um, so we are trying to make sure that, um, all our documents are backed up and and trying to do that with our kind of local or our, our current employee, um, and we're not getting to it as fast as we would like to. We have years and years and years of bridge files, road files, um, let alone payroll documents and that, that sort of thing that we would like, uh, help in our office. I was thinking some sort of, uh, office intern, a high schooler, uh, maybe they can come in over their winter break and put in eighty to a hundred and sixty hours of work for four weeks and, uh, scan and itemize the documents for me. Um, to start putting that in place.
What do you think it costs wise?
I think ten to twelve bucks an hour. I mean, so, and that easily can fit inside of our budget.
And you have all the equipment to do what you're wanting to do in-house?
Yeah. Yeah, our scanner can accept anything that we need to do, like big wise, we can come up here to the, um, the mailroom. I think there's a big scanner back there that we've used in the past. Um, but. It's involved, okay, sorry. Um, the, uh, most of the bridge files, uh, construction files, and these are all construction things. I, I wanna, I don't wanna lose something and have, have that history gone about what we did out there, you know, even if it's forty, fifty, sixty years ago.
Right.
Um, at least we'd have it, be able to access it. Um, we all have laptops now. We can access it from anywhere. We can VPN in. I can get that information, um, instead of, oh, I don't have a file, so. That would be helpful. Um, we will, I also think that this is, one of the things that, um, helped me during, uh, my tenure as a, uh, college student or even high schooler was, uh, the interview process. I want to put back a little bit back into the, um, kids about how to interview properly and that sort of thing, so teach them. I've been over to Eagle Grove, um, to a, to a class one time and I interviewed kids that wanted to become. And I interviewed kids that wanted to become engineers, so, and asked them questions and, and critique them on their interview skills.
Any concern for the board, I think.
I don't have any concerns.
Have a motion, or does he, does he wanna?
I'm moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Question, or, um, all that documents that you're going to have scanned in, is that any of it gonna be something you're gonna want on the website?
Um, possibly in the future, I'd like to get it scanned first and then kind of wrap my head around, okay, um, is this something I can put on Beacon? Um, is this something I need to go on to the website, uh, I see it, uh, we're currently doing that right away project, uh, that is going through. And they've completed, uh, Belmont Township and are moving on to Pleasant, um, so, which is nice, so that anybody can get on to Beacon and see that. It could be, uh, sometimes I don't know if that's useful information on Beacon, but it's useful to us. Uh, so it could very well be put on the website that if somebody wanted to come in and look at a document about an old bridge, I have no problem with that. So, yeah, and if they wanna know about the old Penny Bridge, uh, the old Detman, Detman Bridge, that's a, you know, stringer bridge and a pony, pony press.
Did you ever get rid of that bridge that you sold?
Uh, the person that is, uh, that won the opening bid, um, for a dollar, has not come in and, and got the bridge yet. I need to go back and review with the timeline of that, um, because there was a one-year, uh, abandonment in there again, so we might.
And in that case, it would go back out for a bit again.
I'll have to redo that.
Secondary roads update also.
Uh, Blades Route, Weed Wiven and, uh, Bridges and Culverts again, uh, mowing, trying to get that last, uh. Uh, route done for the mowing of gravel, uh, spot blading, helped with the total patch when they also did sundry, um, in the idea of mowing. Um, we probably won't do a full mow on the gravels, just to time-wise, we don't know if we're gonna have enough time. Uh, but we will do a full mow on the, uh, pavements, one more time before that white stuff falls. Um, the, they are going to spot mow bad spots on the gravels and burn. So we'll be doing some burning, obviously rotting out right now for burning, because I don't need it to go into anybody's speed, so. Yeah, um, so, we won't be doing that.
And it sounds like we're gonna get a hard frost, you know, which should.
Slow down.
Yeah, I mean, we should be able to mow and be done, essentially.
Yeah. Um, trucks route, uh, hauling the last of the, um, gravel miles for next year, the limestone. We call it the dusting, I get it, it's, there's a lot of dust out there, um, but it's, it's, we're not putting down dust, we're putting down limestone. About ten to, ten to eleven loads of gravel on each gravel mile, or ten to, ten to eleven loads of limestone. On the gravel miles that are gravel miles for next year, so we give them a little boost in there, as I discussed in the past. Um, patching hard surface routes, uh, with the total patcher, uh, we did get a crack filling, um, device for the total patcher. And they were out crack filling with it last week, uh, we did some testing at our, uh, sand salt, uh, facility, just to make sure. Dry time, um, you might see some light haze on that, that is a limestone chalk, essentially, uh, softball chalk, you know, or field chalk.
Oh, by the lake.
Yep, yep, on Page Avenue on the inside, that was one of the work orders I kind of completed, um, so, help. So I, I've seen in the past where we start having a road start to crack and it's very minimal in cracking. And we would probably essentially pay more to have a company come in and, and mobilize for that. So this will allow us to go out and do that spot cracking when we need to, um, and some bigger projects, not large projects by any means. Um, because it, it will take a little bit more of the traffic control to do that, but, um, so like I said, if you see the white haze. Uh, they also went out on the concrete patches that we had done and sealed the, the edges with the, the ceiling, so. Um, grand other program, the gravel miles for next year have been topped with the, uh, limestone and are complete. Mowing and grinding routes is ninety-one percent, I said we're almost done, um, and then we completed ten work orders, uh, last week. And I, uh, we did have one special work order out on Hundred Ninetieth Street, uh, the fire department had a semi that caught on fire with a bunch of. Pay bales on it, and they put about twenty thousand gallons of water under our road, so we had to go do a little bit of. Pull it over, put, put about three or four loads of rock on it.
Got you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you. Any, uh, old business, new business, or?
No.
No.
I had no meetings last week. We will be in a recess until ten thirty and reconvene our drainage trustee meeting with the conference call of Franklin County. On joint gaming district, one eighteen dash four. We adjourn our supervisor, we keep it all going.
I'd say we adjourn supervisors.
I think, yeah, then we'll, uh, motion to, uh, motion to adjourn the supervisor's meeting.
So moved.
Your second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll reconvene at ten thirty as.
Trustees.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, hold on, they're having some technical difficulties over there.
You guys okay? If we continue without video?
Yes, ma'am.
Amy.
Hello there.
Got a few minutes or a minute left.
Okay, very good.
Anything exciting happening in Wright County today?
Uh, we are having a candidates forum tonight at seven o'clock for, uh, all the supervisor candidates. Uh, at the library. That's.
And it sounded like there's one contestant.
That's. That's correct.
Yeah, okay, I've got ten thirty, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, open the joint. Meeting with Wright County on Drainage District four dash one-one-eight. Lukens Meyer moved to open meetings, there a second?
Second from Cluse.
Please second. Okay, uh, all in favor, open the meeting, signify by aye.
Aye.
All ayes Wright County.
All ayes Franklin, okay, we got judgments made to this, uh, agreement with Franklin Wright. On the Aaron's property, everybody agreeable to that now?
Yes, Wright County all agreeable.
Okay, Franklin's agreeable, I couldn't say, so. An entertaining motion to accept this agreement and I will sign it on my end or on this end and, uh, move forward.
Motion to approve by Cluse.
Okay, is there a second from McVicker, McVicker second, any discussion? All in favor of this agreement as written, uh, signified by aye?
Aye.
All ayes Wright.
All ayes, uh, Franklin, okay, anything else?
Can we get real call?
Uh, are all members present?
Uh, yeah, three board members and co-op, Bruins are drainage clerk are present here.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, and, uh, all are present here with, uh, monitor Ellis and drainage clerk, um, Morris.
Okay, yeah, Auditor Flint stepped out of this meeting, uh, so she's not present, okay, so, okay. Uh, did, did we close the meeting, I think?
Not yet.
Okay, I didn't need to move, close this joint meeting.
We're moved.
Second, Rick, check, and then, uh, Lukens Meyer, uh, seconded, not Franklin.
It's also gonna be five.
Any discussion, all is signed, just signify by aye?
Aye, aye. Is the intention to file this or only maintain it, I mean, to record this, or is it only to maintain it in the drainage records?
I'd say it needs to be maintained.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You guys have a great day.
You too, thank you. Do we need to come to the library, um, later this afternoon?
No, you're not eligible to vote in Wright County. See ya.
Are we eligible to cause trouble?
Yeah, you're always eligible for that.
You know, my great-grandfather worked in state legislature for Wright County.
I did not know that.
Yeah, I'll say like that, my cousin found, so we'll talk some other time.
Okay, all right, see ya. Yeah, bye.
Okay, uh, so you know others, things on you didn't have a motion to, uh, adjourn our drainage.
So moved.
Question, the resolution that we passed earlier or the affidavit, uh, did you decide resolution? That resolution, are you going to record that as a recording since on the affidavit?
We're waiting for, uh, council's recommendation, I asked David that and he goes, let me think about that, so.
My thought is we should, because that's how police.
That's how we found out about it, yeah.
Yes, so I think that we shouldn't, the full documents are in the same place.
I'm good with that.
I think it needs to be recorded, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you have your answer.
Yep.
Before I record it. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourned.
So that'll be interesting.